This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Davenport Public Library Board of Trustees to its order, Tuesday, February 19th, 2019. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I have a motion regarding consent agenda, I'd appreciate it.
We'll approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Craig, and thank you, Malavika. I have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda, is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, question carried. Welcome, Tom. Next item on the agenda is public with comment. Seeing, hearing, no one, we'll move on to the next item, reports, Laura, friends?
Amy's gonna do my friends' report since I've been...
Yes, you're right.
She's just back from...
Are you sending pizza?
Yep, right here, it's around 24 hours on the plane. So, the Friends did not have a quorum at their last meeting, so they were unable to take any official action, though they did vote by email for some invoices to be paid. But we do have the finished casebooks, so I brought one for everybody, but we should wrap rounds.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi! Yes.
Hi, Amanda.
Hi!
We're just hearing the friends' report from Amy.
Okay.
So, again, we have the casebook, we're working on setting up a meeting with the Capitol Campaign Committee, which has been a challenge, we sent out a couple little polls looking for attendees, and we've had a hard time finding a time when lots of folks in the Campaign Committee can attend. Our purpose with that is to assign specific potential donors for various members to solicit now that we have the campaign materials, so that's where we are with that at this time. Oh, and then the, tentatively, the date for the annual meetings was set for the Friends for Tuesday.
Laura's shaking her head.
So that doesn't work?
I can't be there, sorry, I was about that afterwards.
Okay, so it's not tentatively scheduled, so just ignore that, we'll find another date for that.
We'll do it, thanks.
And I think that's it.
If I could ask a question, I had made a pledge to the Capitol Campaign, and last year I got a letter basically saying, "Thank you for your pledge," but I guess I had anticipated, because I think I had made the pledge periodically over a period of time, and I guess I had thought I would get some kind of a bill saying, "Please send us X."
And you should, so if we didn't do that, then that's on us.
Okay, well, I mean, I just assumed that that would happen, okay, so...
Yes, so that should be happening, yes.
Okay, alright.
We will check and make sure that we know that everybody's getting the letters.
Yeah, I mean, you know, people are gonna make their pledge, but we say...
Oh yeah, absolutely, we need to follow up with that.
Someone will come up automatically out of an account, right? I think mine does.
If it comes out automatically, then you would, but you should get another thank you that says, "Thank you for making your most recent contribution," because we should be able to track that too.
Yeah.
Right, Tracy?
Identity now.
Auto payments, we should be able to track, yeah.
Those will come in as a...
I noticed it started, and then I hadn't, I just figured it came out once a month.
Yeah, we probably wouldn't send you a monthly thank you now, yeah.
Moving on, committee reports, Tom, anything for finance?
Well, the budget appears we're in a lot of places running below budget in terms of expenses, but there are others obviously where we're popping over, but I think overall it's pretty good this season, so.
Okay. I will share that one thing that we're tracking fairly carefully is, we paid for a lot of contract plowing this winter, and for a lot of salt on our parking lot and sidewalks and things like that, so that particular budget is getting hit pretty hard.
Is that doing the maintenance?
Buildings and grounds, G25, so right now it shows a balance of 63,000, Casey let me know this morning that we paid some bills and that balance is actually only 30,000 right now, so.
Come on, spring!
You know, some years it's better, other years it isn't, it's just a buck of the rock.
So hopefully this latest go-round will be the end of it, dare I say.
All in favor, please say aye. Personnel, I guess, Amanda, Amanda's not here, so I just wonder, is there anything from personnel?
Not that I'm aware of, or that I've been involved in.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, advocacy?
Oh, something wonderful to share, we had our second backpack party, February 2nd, and we had 10, excuse me, 11 new volunteers who came in, and literally everybody has said, "Please keep on doing this, we would like to join as a part of Davenport Public Library and Friends," that's how I included, Friends of Davenport Public Library, and I think her designation is Creative Director, I forget the exact designation, but she's the lady from Government Food Bank, and they do want to work with us on some kind of a program where, you know, we could provide, and this is just a name that I threw out, I mean, you know, Feed and Feed, or something like that, so they are really interested, but this weather has made me not go there, and meet her, I'm supposed to go see her, and I should do that, you know, so let's spring, spring soon. So it was really, really fun, and people have asked me to post when is our next one, and I should qualify that even though we might be making a group and going, if you do not have the time to come at that time, that's fine, you know, you can go at the other three times that they have, but it's just that when you go as a group, you get the group credit, like, you know, Davenport Public Library, Friends of Davenport Public Library going together, that's the only difference, but it's up to you if you cannot make it, and that's fine. That was one.
Can I interrupt you while you're on the topic of government food bank? I went to Mark Miller, the director at another event that I was at, and he approached me and wondering if at some point in time we might be willing to be a drop-off place for them for donations as well, and so we had some really preliminary conversation about what that might look like, because clearly we don't want to be a drop-off place for everybody in the Quad Cities, so it would need to be some kind of specific partnership like what Malavika is talking about, Read and Feed, which is a great, I think, a nice title, way to look at it, and then I also asked him, as part of that, if they could do some programming for us about hunger in the Quad Cities, you know, food, when does food expire, is it really expired, all those kinds of things, and so they thought that that might have some possibility.
That's wonderful, yeah, that's wonderful, thank you, Amy.
So we'll see where that goes.
Just before, I wanted to share this with you all, and I can, you know, send it as a PDF file as well, can I pass it to you, Steve? This is a campaign which is a part of American Library Association, which is called Libraries Transform, and this has been adjusted, implemented for specifically Iowa libraries, and it is, as I said, it's called #LibrariesTransform, hashtag, that's what it's viral on when you go to social media, and these are postcards, I printed it as a poster, but these are basically postcards that have been created by one of the librarians of Iowa State University, who's a part of the Libraries Transform program, and these postcards are being sent, and this kind of came to my mind where we do have a topic that we're going to discuss, the last one, the Iowa Property Tax Backfill, so these are postcards that have been created and sent to your legislators to let them know how and why library funding, libraries in Iowa are important, so this is their marketing campaign, and it can be printed as a postcard, so I just thought of, you know, prelude alarm to show it's a period, and I can share it with all of you if you would like it that way. And lastly, just something to share, which I saw while I was just about coming for the meeting, and it's, City of Davenport has its annual Davenport cleanup, and we'd been talking a long time ago with, you know, Iowa State Highway, things like that, which did not come to fruition because of various things, but this is just a one-day event, like, it starts at 8:00 and gets over at 11:00 on March 23rd, so in case if you're interested to go in as a group, and then, you know, I just thought of bringing it along to share, so that, this is all, Steve and I had.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, takes care, committee reports, Amy, grab your report.
So, we had the QCDs launch party, if anybody needs a coaster to remind you of where to find QCDs, take one, pass them down, there will be collector's items, I'm sure, at some point in time.
Hang on to it long enough.
Hang on to it long enough. I looked, I think it was last Friday, and so that was like a week after the launch party, and we'd had like 168 tracks streamed already, so that seems pretty good, don't know if it was three people doing all of that, or what, we, you know, I'll have to, we have to learn more about the reports for some of that, but at least it shows that the sites didn't use, so that was fun. Let's see, I think that is about, yeah, I don't think we have anything else to add other than what's in the report, and if anybody has any questions about it, we'll cover some of the other things that are...
Any questions for Amy? Okay, thank you, Amy. Moving on to new business, first item is discussion of bad weather procedure.
Okay, so, I guess these, these are just guidelines that came up with, really, so not really a policy, but just to provide some clarity, I think, to staff maybe more than anything in terms of expectation about when we might close for bad weather and things like that, so it's not a, you know, if this happens, then absolutely, we're not open, it's kind of more, these are the things that we will take into account as we're making decisions, so at least there's some, I think, you know, guideline for the staff to look at, so staff all have very different opinions about when roads are too bad to drive on, we're never going to be in agreement on that, or when conditions are too bad, so hopefully this will help get us a little bit more on the same page with that. So, go ahead, so we would be adding these just to our staff guidelines, guidelines and procedures for staff to look at.
And Amy and I talked about perhaps having some kind of a policy, but to have a policy, you know, it'd have to be very, very general, because you don't know exactly what the weather conditions are going to be, so you, to set down any kind of a policy as to what's going to happen, when, and if, in regard to what, it'd be, have to be so general that probably wouldn't be of much use, so I think something like this would probably be better.
Now, you would have one policy for snow, one for ice, one for, you know...
Storms, locusts.
Cold.
Yeah, well, and we can't really use the schools, because they use very different criteria, and they're concerned about very different things. So, yeah, I mean, I think, in all honesty, some of ours will be, can we safely get patrons into and out of the buildings, and we might find, especially out at Eastern, where you have such terrible problems with blowing and drifting snow, that sometimes we might end up having to close at Eastern, because we're concerned about the lot blowing shut and people not being able to get out, whereas the other facilities can stay open, so...
But you can't just close one and not the other.
Sure we can, yep.
Okay.
Now, if someone calls you and says, "I can't make it," I mean, there's no repercussions from that, right? Your own staff, like...
Correct, yep.
Yeah, I would think one of the important things beyond the fact of the patrons getting in is can staff safely get in, I mean, that has to be a serious part of this whole discussion.
No, just, 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 I could, I mean, it says caretaker and assistant, I mean, just...
So that's officially what custodian, the custodians are now, is their official, yeah, their official position is, are like, caretakers, yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, we had staff that called in because schools were closed, and they didn't have childcare, some staff just didn't want to come out when it was really, really cold, we had a lot of people calling in, so they used their accrued leave time.
So did you have enough to function, I mean, even when it was 33 or whatever it was?
It probably had less patrons too.
Correct, yes, sorry.
My helpful...
And there, I mean, there were all those things that, we don't have to process, you know, every loan request, you know, we usually do that every day, but we don't have to do that, you know, we don't have to pull holds every day, so if all we, if the staff we have is just enough to keep the public service desk open, then that's what we do.
And the Saturday after that bad weather, library's got a thumbs up in the Saturday Quad City Times editorial page for being open, and for people who had enough places to go to keep warm.
Yeah, we were surprisingly busy that day, especially down here.
The cold day.
And I... I mean, it wasn't busy, busy, but it was more people than what I would have thought.
And I did see a discussion happening on, you know, channels like LA and things like that, that around the country, libraries being open, used as, you know, as centers where people, you know, got in together and stuff like that, so it was actively dependent where they were.
You have a lot of people that depend on your computers, that's how they socialize and work, and...
Right.
I think if you can, probably should be open whenever you can, and it looks like that kind of is the policy.
Any other discussion or questions regarding the adverse winter weather guidelines? Discussion of draft side letter to union contract regarding trial period for promoting staff.
So that's, yeah, that's on the back of the director's report, just a couple sentences, so, so the union contract provides for a trial period whenever staff members promoted to a new position, so an internal promotion. We have two positions in the library where we think that promotion from that one position to another in that instance, we shouldn't be using that trial period, so we have 20-hour a week customer services, senior clerk positions, and we have some 25-hour a week positions in the same department, same position level, so the only difference between those two jobs is an additional guaranteed $5 a week of pay. Right now, when we promote people into those, because of how the contract's written, we have to give them 30 days trial, 30 working days, so part-time staff member, that could turn out to be like two months by the time they have that 30 working days, and which means we can't fill that vacant 20-hour a week position, which is almost inevitably filled from outside, so that's really kind of the entry-level position for customer services staff. So, we approached the union as to whether or not they'd be willing to consider a side letter to the effect that in that particular instance, we wouldn't need to wait that 30 day, it really kind of can handicap the department, it's just, you know...
Yeah, I had problems figuring out why anybody would care, but now that you're talking about it, they're protecting that if a person doesn't like it, they can go back.
Or if they're not successful.
Right.
You know, if it's a job that is just not something they're going to be successful at, that gives them a position to go back to, but in order to give them that position to go back through, we can't fill it.
Catch 22.
So it has to say...
They should basically know what the job is, because...
Right, and they're already, yeah, they're already doing the job, so it's just a question of that extra five hours a week, and in all honesty, if it becomes, if that's too much for somebody, if they're like, you know, "I'm doing school, I just can't manage that additional five hours a week," it's not going to take, be hard to find somebody who wants to flip-flop with them, because most of the folks who are working 20 hours a week want it's not the hours it's going to be.
That's good, Tom.
So this is, we've shared this with the union's paid staff member, and we will discuss it with the union stewards at our next labor management meeting, so then hopefully the union will vote, and then at the next trustee meeting, the trustees can vote to approve this, and we'll all be on the same page, and we can move forward that much more quickly when we're filling those particular positions.
Okay, next item, a discussion of board policy, posting on public message boards.
Now that we, I'm trying to say, we, Casey quick-sends our accreditation report to the state library of Iowa, somehow we're starting all over again with review of policies. So, so these are the two that are the oldest, that haven't been reviewed, so posting on public message boards, and we really don't have any recommendations for changes unless there are some questions.
I just, you know, as things change, I just, I mean, it's easy to look at what's here and decide if it needs to be changed, but I was trying to think of things that might not be here, so, and this kind of actually goes back to a previous actual circumstance, and that was when we were, when they were doing the work to create the Creative Arts Academy, Kenneth Wayne called me and asked what I thought about whether or not it was okay for the contractor to put a sign outside the building saying that they were doing the work, and I went and looked at this, and it says, "Message boards, public message boards," but as I read it, I saw, you know, about businesses of a commercial nature would not be posted, that's what I told him, "No," and, I mean, that was okay, there wasn't, they didn't get upset or anything, but, so I guess they were just wondering if maybe, are they all boards, or could we just say, "Posting of public messages," and maybe that's not the best thing either, I'm just kind of thinking about that.
Yeah, they are bulletin boards.
Okay, but it talks about the front windows, and then along that regard, I thought, well, maybe I should just say windows. The third bullet from the bottom. Anyway, just, it was just a thought, and...
Yeah, I don't have any issues with continuing this policy, I think it's important that we want to make sure that everybody understands that we're not going to be promoting any commercial entities.
Did you say something like, posting on public library property, posting materials on public library property, and then that covers your boards, and so, something like that.
Detailed out here, for us, back windows, your front windows.
It's property, because it's really property, right? You don't put signs on your boulevards, or...
Correct, right. I have a comment, I'm thinking about the Capitol Campaign and the areas where we're hoping to provide naming opportunities, and provide in-kind or opportunities for businesses to provide in-kind services, and one of the ones that we're looking at specifically is, you know, lighting or banners, like, you know, Genesis provided the banners, and so if we're kind of thinking about the exterior of the building and expanding the scope of this policy beyond the message board, I'm wondering if we want to have some sort of statement in here, like, allowing trustee approval, I just want to make sure that anything that we would do as part of the Capitol Campaign wouldn't be at odds with any revisions to this policy. I guess I don't see it as a, because that would be something that we, the library and/or the Friends, would be posting thanking a business for their support, as opposed to them advertising. Soliciting, because I was just thinking, like, with lighting, because if we have someone donate the lighting in-kind, and we wanted to recognize that, I don't think that'd be a problem, because we'd be initiating it.
Would you be doing that on the outside of the building, because I think that's, just thinking...
What would be like a temporary, like, on a banner, "Thanks to such-and-such electric company for helping us relight," but it wouldn't be permanent.
There's a whole issue of naming rights, so if it's permanent, or is it, like, are we going to become the tax layer, Davenport Public Library?
In a sense, no, well, you know what I mean, visually, and it's really...
Well, the example is Modern Roman Park, you know, used to be in this whole stadium, now it's Modern Roman Park.
Yeah, so for...
For the right money. I don't think the library itself will be renamed, but we're probably going to have, if things go well, different sections within the interior of the library, children's, so-and-so's, children's department, or something like that. I don't see any real issues with that.
What about the exterior, which sends a different signal, is it, if it's a little brass plaque that says lighting, that's one thing, but if it's...
Yeah, I know, yeah.
You see, see what I'm saying?
Correct, yeah, right, yeah.
I mean, that's a very good thing to be thinking about, yeah.
I'm thinking of the uplighting, if we get the uplighting... Right, yeah, we get the exterior lighting, but I think we would acknowledge that on the donor wall or someplace different, not, or on a temporary banner, probably not as a permanent right out by the lighting. No? Yeah.
Going back to what Steve said, most contractors would want to put something up outside if they were doing something, but this wouldn't allow that, right? A general contractor...
I said no to the one before.
I don't know, I, I'm just thinking from their perspective, they probably would really like that.
Is it going to help your cost? Your cost?
It helps your visibility, I think, but, I don't know, I'm not sure if it'd do it...
Well, there's value in that, so it would be part of the negotiating price, right? Like, if you're, if someone donates lighting in-kind, and we're going to recognize that, that's, you know, going to be perhaps one of the reasons that someone donates that service.
But thinking outside of a building, you have to be, it says a different message than a room, like, this room might have signs, or whatever, I really, that's something that I would imagine needs to be thought through very, very, very carefully.
Yeah, yeah, anything, I mean, anything permanent on the exterior.
I wasn't talking permanent, I was talking temporary. Yeah, I think, you know, like, you know, most contractors will put a sign up in their building, this or building that.
When it comes down.
And then it's...
Comes down.
But apparently this wouldn't allow that, that was the answer. The other part is, especially with the downtown project, the exterior of the building really isn't going to change much, so, I mean, it's not like a contractor would be able to say, "That's, I did that."
It's not a brand-new site.
It's inside, it's not outside.
When we had other work done previously, we, here in this building, like, when the sort of room was built, we didn't get any requests from the contractor to put any kind of signage up, I don't think.
Maybe it might want to put something up, since they're into architectural, in my work, but they always take it off.
If you use a local builder, like Estes or Russell, or the two biggest ones, I guess, I don't know, they're going to have a role yet in this, or...
Correct, yeah, because there's not that much construction.
Right.
You could always handle it by saying, because you might have different trades, and maybe head it off by saying that we're going to, we'll have a listing of all the people... and maybe head it off by saying that we're going to, we'll have a listing of all the people working as the building is worked on, we'll have a list inside of all the, like one sign that has all the contractors or something like that. And so it may head off, because if you do one, then how do you do another? And, you know, do you say, well, you can, but you can, and so, because there'll be different trades, so maybe a way of recognizing their work on a sign.
That would help instead of saying, you guys make, yeah.
Right. And then it's something that we're putting up.
Exactly.
And then, so then it's our business. Yeah.
Good idea.
Amy, with public message boards, does that, would that include electronic media? But like Facebook. So if someone posts something on Facebook, they tag us, Denver Public Library. We will not share the post till the, till Denver Public Library approves the post, right? I mean, would it be the same for electronic media as well?
I think we're going to cover that with an upcoming social media.
I mean, if anybody can post, like, for example, Denver Schools does not even allow them to be tagged if you have to post something. But Denver Public Library does allow a tagging that takes place. So I just thought of public message posting on electronic media. Would we have somebody who would approve that post before it shows up on Facebook, let's say? Instagram, let's say? Because that can also be used as an advertising board, you know.
Yeah.
You don't have a social media policy right now. You probably do have one, you just need to update it.
They're working, our new outreach person is working on.
A new one, right?
Yeah.
This is, this refers to physically, just, yeah. Because I started to think, like, as Laura brought up about the lighting, if I say, Malika Shikhande Lighting Company, and then I post it on Facebook, so that appears on Denver Public Library Facebook, advertising Malika Shikhande's company, you know. So it's trying to think it that way, where the same posting, but it's electronically posted, right? And it comes up. How would we, we'll make sure we cover that.
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
So do we want to just change the title, this posting on public library property? And then message boards?
Do we have to do anything to do that, or do you just, do you just change it?
Well, I think we, what we need is, we need the, and usually we would do this after, at the next meeting, we usually discuss, and then so at the next meeting, we'll have the change to the, to the title, and then the board would approve the, the policy.
Sounds good.
Any other questions or comments on this one? Moving on. Next item is a discussion of board policy, use of tobacco and smoking products.
We did not see any changes to this. The last time we updated it, we added the, the sim, any kind of simulated, it's on the other side. Any simulated smoking device to cover the vaping products? And hopefully that covers pretty much anything that might come down the road. There's something new, I don't know.
This was all kind of triggered by state law, where they outlawed smoking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just have a question about the last sentence. Use of tobacco and smoking products are permitted in a location allowable under state law. Is there any place like that on the library property?
You can smoke in your car, in a parking lot.
With the window shut.
Not on the parking lot. You can't stand beside your car. You have to be in your car.
With the window shut. Door locked.
And that includes low devices, too.
Yeah.
Sneak it in, yeah.
What do you do when you find somebody using, you know, you just tell them to quit?
Yeah, we just ask them to not do that. We really have not had much trouble with the smoking. I mean, it's possible that somebody's discreet enough about it that we're never going to catch them. I mean, people can, are, I think, often pretty discreet about some of that. But it might be really hard, because there's not an odor that we get with the cigarette. I mean, the piece of it that I really wish we could change, but we can't because of, because of the law, would be to put an ashcan out in front of the main library, because we have such a terrible problem with cigarette butts.
Yeah, that, yeah. They won't do that.
No, the law doesn't allow us to do that.
It's like, come here, everybody.
Yeah, because they say, we'll encourage people.
Yes.
Instead, people go out, and they're on the sidewalk where it's legal to smoke. And then they just.
The butts, yeah.
Toss it under the back.
But not if they're sitting on your.
Property. You can't, no, you can't. You can't sit.
You can't sit.
But you can stand.
But you can stand, right. Throw down your cigarette butt. Where's the closest trash can out there?
Well, of course, it's just a point, old trash can is on the corner of Fourth and Main. There's one hanging over the flagpost.
Yeah.
Yeah. Shouldn't have one. I know, and nobody wants to set fires.
Yeah, but.
You mean like to have an ashcan there?
Not an ashcan, but something on the coast, you know, that, I mean, people would, I don't know.
Put some sand in the bottom, just call it, right, call it a trash cash can, an ashcan.
Although kitty litter box.
I don't see a lot of people walking over there to use it. Appreciate the thought.
So then this will be on the agenda for approval.
Next item is for approval of a resolution regarding the Iowa property tax backfill. And could you give a background on this, Tom?
Well, this is, this is what I talked about last week. Several years ago, when the legislature basically gave a tax break to commercial property owners, they promised local governments that they would continue to provide what's called backfill, where they would, the state would make up the difference in property tax revenue to county school districts in cities. And there has been discussion of eliminating or reducing that. And that's basically, this is preemptively saying, no, we don't want that.
Okay. And so this would be something you envision that we would send to one of our legislators?
I would suggest we send to all of our legislators.
Oh, okay, sure. Yeah, I was thinking ours, when somebody.
Well, we could send to all the people from Scott County, who wanted to send more, we could send more.
No, I was just thinking of, yeah, so we could send it, we would send it to our legislators at the state.
Okay. And I tried to put language in that, you put a lot of whereas's in when you're explaining why.
But it could be sent to other public libraries?
Well, if anybody else wants to, to use it, I'm, I'm not, I don't have any prior ownership. I just drafted something.
No, that's good.
Guess the first thing I should have done is ask for, since this is for approval, to ask for a motion, so. Are you.
Well, I will move to approve it.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Again, if people want to make changes, then.
Um, any, what's the discussion on this item?
They promised it.
Yeah.
But they're backtracking.
Right.
And they're definitely backtracking.
I predicted when they promised it, they would backtrack.
And it says it all.
And it's a lot of money.
Yes, it is.
And, you know, I was talking with Amy the other day, and just from the city budget, it's been several years since we've had any kind of an increase. In fact, I think we have, last time it changed, about $57,000 was taken back during a flood several years ago, and a lot of money was spent to do that, and we happen to have not spent all our money. So, anyway, yeah, is there any other discussion on this thing?
I'm.
How would you, how would you envision using that?
I, I've been planning to, when I saw this, and then when I read this, that Casey had sent us, I've been planning to print these as, as I said, the postcards, but I printed as a poster. And I'm planning to print them as postcards.
Okay.
Because this is, this is done by the State Iowa Library Association. And my plan has been to, you know, send it as a postcard to our legislators, legislators, making a mention of why. And, yeah, so that, that has been my thought of doing.
It could be done that way. I mean, you know, I've.
I mean, but the same, the same, I mean, it's in support to this of sending. And if, I would be happy to, if, if it's okay, if all of us are happy to print them in the form of a postcard. And again, it's a supported campaign by the Iowa Library Association for similar purposes.
Okay, these kind of envision, though, that you might write a message on.
Yes, yes, yes.
So, okay, so it's not necessarily tied to this particular.
No, but it, this can be used for any of the, you know, campaigns. So this is the back part of it, where you write your message and listen to it. That's been my thought.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking maybe about you. Any downside to this, Tom?
Again, you know, it's just remind the legislators that we know what we've promised.
What they said.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't have any problems. Any further discussion? Not a call for the vote on the motion. All those that voted for the motion to send this resolution to the, to our state legislators, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone vote? Thank you. Motion carries. We will. Send it off today.
And, you know, it was, I signed it to you in a word document, so if you want to print it on something else, and then if you also wanted to make note that it was approved on this day, or whatever.
Okay, sure.
Yeah.
Guess we have no old business. Let's see. Can I do anything else right now that's going on?
Steve, can I, can I bring up something? I, I wasn't there at the last meeting, and this is what I wanted to share with you. Amy, you had shared it as the 2018 strategic plan implementation report. And something which I forgot to mention was, we did have something which you had said, participation in in teacher, in teacher in-service PTA meetings to increase awareness among schools, et cetera. So a thought just struck me, and I don't know whether it's feasible, but I thought to share. I think the kindergarten, elementary school roundup is going to happen. But I'm not sure. But, I mean, it's, it's a possibility that those kindergarten roundups, if, if we can have our presence there, you know, and I don't know how, but.
Are we going to have, we, I know we were informed about the roundup. We were, and we, we can't really stay up to them, because they all happen in all the different schools at the same time, and so we can't meet that demand. I did offer to the school districts that if they would like some library materials to put in those kindergartners' packets, we could provide some brochures about the library, bookmarks of our hours, and I have on her back.
Right. Is it, is it something that, like, if it's okay, like, I remember going to one of the, there was a meeting downtown here, that all libraries were able to set up, who had gone along with somebody from the library here. Is it something where if, if any one of us has the time on that day to represent the library at these kindergarten roundups? I'd be happy to go to, you know, McKinley's, around the corner from AA and a few other schools. And so I was thinking that way, if.
Oh, I think that's fine.
If we have the time, and we can go, is that okay?
Yeah, we can provide you with materials to take, for sure.
True, true. Because some schools also have, on the first day of school, if we can't meet them, then on the first day of school, they have these meet and greet tea parties on the, on here, laptops at the back, and there are three schools which do it, where our parents stop and all that. So I was thinking on those lines as well, if we cannot do it at that time, maybe on some other day to go. And I would be happy to go to any one of these roundups, to have our presence, and ensure that, you know.
And we do, we will, again, this year, be sending out library cards and information to all of the incoming kindergarteners. We don't, we don't have them already, so, yeah. So that's a direct mailing to all those new students.
So they automatically get a card anyway?
Yeah, so we get the class lists from the schools, and usually a couple weeks after school starts, and then we, and we issue the, the find-free cards to the kids.
Just automatically mail them to their house.
Yeah, so then, and we, yeah, we mail them to their house with a, a letter indicating why it's important and things that they can do with it. So it's information about library property.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, given the agenda, your motion to adjourn.
Subpo.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, great. And motion second to adjourn, all those that favorably signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
I got my job at Costco because of the library.
Really?
By using the computer to the library, I got my marketing job at Costco.
Wow, I have to share this. I so completely forgot. The bakery manager at Target, his name is.